The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular City Council meeting of May 28, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cor.
Here.
Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coleman.
Here.
Councilmember Bashir Tash.
Here.
Thank you. Do we have any members of the public present? In keeping with Council's resolution, public statements are received at different times. Depending on the item, I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray next to the speaker's podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statement. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you'll be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda public statement items. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at the appropriate time. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you'll be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any behavior that disrupts the meeting, that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, hate speech, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards for items not listed on today's agenda, nor have we received any speaker cards for agenda items.
Thank you. Next item. And just for the record, Councilmember Arias entered at 3:31.
Reports item 3A, fiscal year 2025-26, proposed budget book.
Thank you. City Manager Clegg.
I'm Mayor and Council. Pleased to be here this afternoon to just give a quick update to you. And I would frame that this update is a little bit different. As we have gone through the budget process this year, we had, of course, some options for the, in particular, the capital improvement program, that through the budget workshops laid out some of those options and listened to council feedback on that topic. And prior to your regular process where you'll have a public hearing in June, the first meeting in June is the annual public hearing related to the budget, and then budget adoption is on June 25th, wanted to give this budget report to reflect what is in the recommended budget book for council consideration. That includes that final CIP list after we had presented some of those options to council in workshop. And so, have a brief presentation to just go through where we landed on with the funding that was available. What are those projects that are in the recommended proposed budget, always subject to council direction and approval, but we'll walk through those now. So, again, on the capital outlay fund, that is our fund that is, comes from our general revenues. That is largely our transhumance and occupancy tax revenues that we've put into our capital program each year. This year, we have $5 million available. And so, the projects in the recommended proposed budget are $2 million for street resurfacing. Last time we met in a workshop, I acknowledged that there were a series of smaller projects. These range from around $50,000 to about $400,000 for city facility repairs, for HVAC repairs, roofs, some of our traffic signals, streetlights repairs, also painting of crosswalks and things like that. They're the typical annual maintenance. And I think that the way that council characterized this at the workshop was, we don't want to create more deferred maintenance. Let's address at least maintenance issues. And so, we have about $1.7 million of maintenance that if we defer, you know, just pushes issues potentially farther down the road. And then, there's one other project in here that's, that was being proposed is the Beach Park Bridge. It's also been known in prior years as the 24th Street Pedestrian Bridge, and that would round out the capital outlay fund projects. There's just three brief slides here, and so I'll go through each one and then open up for any questions or comments. On the PSVS side, we had more projects listed that weren't put into so much of a sort of a composite, but that first one is a composite of six different projects between police and fire. One at the police fire station to avoid having rainwater come into the basement when it rains heavily. And then, in our fire stations, again, we have some bathrooms that are not functioning properly. We have a roof issue, two sewer line issues, and then two stations that have generators that aren't working. And this is just important ongoing maintenance at those facilities. And then, the next project was on that optional list. And the way, again, I would characterize this for you, council, is you saw a much longer list. This is the shortened up list of what's being recommended with the funding that's available based on council feedback coming out of our workshop. And so, Jefferson School Safety Improvements as a public safety improvement is being recommended. Then we have a series of those park projects. We have Anton Giovanni Park to do sort of the initial phase of putting grass in that space. The Parry Account is that account that our rangers and our storm team use to keep our parks in good condition and do small projects and repairs. Wilson Park and the design for an undeveloped park, we've included in the recommended budget, but as contingent projects that we would wait until mid-year and determine if our revenues are on track for our sales tax and other revenues before deciding to spend those dollars. Similarly, the tree canopy, there's, with our conversations around the heat island effect and general plan, wanted to put at least some dollars aside towards that, but also treat that as contingent. There was conversation around the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And while there's a significant balance in that fund, that we don't need to fund it at the same level as we have in prior years, council does have an adopted resolution that states for the first five years, and this is the fifth year of those five years, that we would put at least $500,000 a year into the trust fund. And so, this is just to keep consistency with that resolution that council adopted, but not put any additional funds above and beyond that into the trust fund. Lastly, the downtown redevelopment fund, to continue to put dollars in there as we have in prior years, but also treat that as a contingent element that we evaluate at mid-year. And that does give us the opportunity to set aside $1.3 million into just a CIP reserve. We don't have to allocate those funds. We're recommending holding those back and being able to evaluate at mid-year where we're at, and if we have identified any grants that may need grant match funds, or emerging projects, or just bank those as savings against future years. Lastly, there were a couple of items that didn't fall into either of those two CIP lists, and that was because we consider them either recurring operating or capital outlay, but they were on those optional lists for council consideration. Open Door Network is a capital outlay. It's not a city CIP project. And so, we, there are $2.5 million in the currently proposed budget book in PSVS funds for this purpose. And then, the recurring operating, there were a series of items that we had pulled out of the budget to balance, back down the budget. But based on, you know, feedback coming out of the workshop, felt like the smaller amount, half of the amount for the community connectors would allow us to continue that pilot program that has had really good results. And then, instead of having as large of an allocation as in prior years on the urban redevelopment property purchase, to still have a few dollars go into that fund to help us to continue to address blighted properties throughout the urban core. And that really rounds out the shorter list of recommended projects within the funding that is available from your options related to the discretionary capital improvement program. So with that, I will pause for questions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any speakers from the public who would like to comment on the presentation?
Mayor Go, I did not receive any speaker cards regarding this item.
Thank you. Can you open up my screen so I can see requests, please? Technology Services? Can you just tell me? Thank you. At this point, I don't see anybody yet requesting to speak. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor Go. So I'll kick it off. Thank you, Mr. Clegg, for the presentation. Thank you also for hearing all of our comments and requests on behalf of our constituents, and also just working towards a balanced budget in a very difficult and challenging economic climate. There are a lot of competing needs and wants and aspirations for our city, which are all worthwhile. But I think when it all comes down to it, the budget and how much we have available really is the priority in determining what we really can and cannot do. Just for some context, I wanted to point out to the public and to the community that, you know, it is, it should be a source of, maybe not pride, but maybe somewhat of a moment for us to feel some sort of solace in that we are adopting this year a balanced budget. And there are many cities throughout the state who cannot say the same thing. In fact, I was just doing a quick review and looking at different cities. This morning, I woke up and read that the city of San Francisco is facing an $876 million deficit over the next two years. The mayor has asked every single city department to take a 15% cut across the board. In San Diego, they're facing a deficit of $258 million. Oakland, $268 million over the next two fiscal years. A lot of this is because of rising prices. They're citing inflation. They're citing insurance costs. Many of the same things that we're experiencing this, at this city, in this city, as cost drivers. Fresno is experiencing or projecting a deficit of over $20 million. And I think that's a really important context, because while we have enjoyed several years of PSVS helping us really ramp up our services and do lots of important projects for our community, we're facing some leaner times. But I think this context really provides us a better, I think, perspective in that we are, in fact, in a better position than many other California cities. And thank God for that. And thank, thank the voters for that as well. I wanted to ask you a couple of questions. First and foremost, regarding Slide 1, general fund capital outlay projects. We are allocating $2 million to street servicing. This is a major concern for many of my constituents, and I know people throughout the city are concerned about the roadways and the number of issues that they experiencing, experience in, not just our city, but throughout, throughout the state with regard to potholes and the poor condition of some of our streets. And I have to say, our city, again, is performing far better than many cities that I've been in recently. We're budgeting $2 million for resurfacing out of the general fund. Mr. Clegg, first and foremost, that's not the totality of dollars that we're investing in local roads. We actually are pulling dollars from the gas tax, from utility surcharge, other revenue sources in addition to the general fund. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Mayor and Council, it is actually a smaller portion of our total resurfacing or street, you know, paving work. We have $8 million of state gas tax fund money, $9.4 million of SB 1 gas tax funding, and several million dollars of other, you know, miscellaneous funding. So we typically will have, you know, $20 or $30 million a year that go into street, you know, repaving in total. But this additional funding that's been coming from, some years it's come from capital outlay, some years it's come from PSVS, allows us to continue to catch up more on our residential streets than some of our larger roadways.
Perfect. And I appreciate that last comment, because I've been thinking a lot about this, this idea of a maintenance cycle, and really trying to get in my head, how do we, as a city and as the city council, really schedule repavement and budget every year, or repavements that get us to a place where we don't have to experience significant deterioration of our streets, or significant potholes, that we have sufficient budgets each and every year that allow us to keep up with it? For example, or more specifically, I should say, street resurfacing, once completed, a street has a life cycle anywhere from, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I heard once, eight to 15 years, depending on the, the road size and the utilization of that roadway.
That's a, that is accurate. It's about eight to 15 years if you're doing a full resurfacing or a rebuild. If you're going in and just doing kind of a preventative maintenance, what we call a slurry seal or a seal coat, that can give you, that can extend the life of a road for about four to six years. And sometimes, it's smart to just go in and do that and extend the life, that it's a lower cost. But for, but for larger repairs that are more expensive, we can expect about an 18, eight to 15-year cycle.
Great. And I know there's, you know, different nuances between residential streets, collectors, and arterials. And forgive me to all those experts in the room, but I'm going to speak very, very broadly and try to keep this very simple for just a minute. So, if we know that a street has a life cycle anywhere from eight to 15 years based on the number of vehicles that travel on that, on that roadway, and we have around 2,100 miles of road in the city?
I should know that top of mind, but I do not.
Okay.
We'll, we'll confirm that number, but it is, that sounds roundly correct.
Let's do this hypothetically, then. Okay, let's say we have 2,100 miles of roadway. We have, you know, a life cycle of eight to 15 years. In, last year, with our general fund, we were able to address, I think, 100 miles of roadway. Are we keeping up and how are we tracking this life, or excuse me, this maintenance cycle, so that we can stay up to date? How confident can we be as we adopt this budget that we are actually maintaining this cycle, this maintenance cycle, in a way that gets us to a place where, you know, we're not falling behind? We're not going to see the deterioration of our streets in the next, you know, eight, 10 years from now?
Again, thank you, Councilmember Mayor and Council. We, there's actually been a fairly consistent system of criteria that cities have adopted for rating the condition of pavement. And so, we have our pavement management system, our pavement management indexes, are words, you know, that, that terms of art that folks use in this field. And so, every few years, we actually have a consultant, we contract this out, to go, and they have vehicles that measure this, as well as they go and, you know, look in person in certain sections. Well, they'll measure every roadway throughout the city and give it a score. And that score is based on, is the condition poor, good, you know, fair, or in bad condition. And so, we have a very specific system for ranking and scoring that. And we prioritize our road repairs based on those roads that are in really bad shape. But also, one of the best practices has been discovered, is if you only ever fix the bad roads and you never extend the life of your fair roads, it's much harder to catch up. And so, some of our projects, and this may be worth knowing for the viewing public, that sometimes you might see a road that's getting a little bit of work, that doesn't look as bad as a road you've seen. That's because it helps us in our overall plans to keep up and catch up. We have to keep roads in good condition and extend their life, so that it gives us time to go and repair some of those roads that are in worse condition. With the funding that we receive on an annual basis, in the last few years, we've actually been able to make a little bit of progress. We've been getting ahead of the actual annual maintenance cycle with some of these additional dollars. I would tell council, in this year's budget at $2 million, because in prior years, we've been able to spend $3 million or $2.5 million. At $2 million, we hold the line. We don't lose progress, but we're not catching up more like we had in the last couple of years. That's, part of that is just the cost of materials and supplies is up, and that number is a little bit down or flat. And so, we're not catching up, but we're keeping up with this allocation.
Okay. I'd like to ask, if we, if we can, to, in the future, after adopting the budget, have a short workshop on the street maintenance cycle and the performance management system that you're referencing, so that council can get a better sense of how we're going about addressing the needs of some of the condition of our roadways. Because, you know, it is the number, at least for me, in War II, it is the number one issue that I hear about all the time, next to homelessness and, and some of the others. But it is definitely a hot issue, and it's most immediate, right? It's most visual, and it's definitely a sign in, in our community of the state of our, of our city. I appreciate that. Another question, if I can, just moving forward on the Open Door Network. Capital outlay, $2.5 million. I feel strongly that we, we, this council ought to do it. This was a commitment that council has made. We made a commitment of $5 million for the new campus for Open Door Network, and it is a worthwhile project. I wonder, though, if we can, if we have an opportunity to tap into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which I believe has a current balance of funding available of around $6 million, if we can utilize those dollars to fund this Open Door Network construction?
Yeah, Councilmember Mayor and Council, we have about $6.5 million currently in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and the Open Door Network would be an eligible expense under the criteria of that fund, yes.
Great. Now, I'm going to make a referral tonight that staff, as they present the final budget, that we consider that as the recommendation to bring forward the Open Door Network shelter construction allocation, and that we utilize the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to make that allocation happen. And then, I think that will then allow us to, that'll free up $2.5 million in the budget. And I, and I thought that perhaps we, we might allocate that into our CIP reserve, giving us an opportunity to just sort of take a breath, take some time, and be more prudent in our budgeting this year, but put that money into the reserve, so that we can get a sense of how the rest of this year or this new fiscal year will play out economically, and perhaps come back at mid-year, when we, when we know a bit more, to make better decisions on how we might allocate those dollars. How does that sound? Is that...
I believe it is prudent. The more that we set aside as reserve or contingency is wise. I would, I failed to mention this verbally, but I meant to, that between the CIP reserve and those projects that I'm recommending as contingent, those represent about $3.9 million that we wouldn't move on until mid-year to make sure we see where we're at on our, our revenue trends. And if you put another $2.5 million in there, that's, you know, close to, that's almost, you know, $6.5 million set aside in reserve, and that's prudent.
Great. Then that would be my, my third referral this afternoon. Thank you.
Councilmember Bashir Tash.
Are we just going over the projects that you have talked about? Or we actually, am I allowed to talk about the budget as well? The book, the proposed budget book?
Yeah, as a budget report item, and we agendize the budget book, you, those are, I'm open to questions about that as well, yes.
Okay, awesome. So, I would like to, before, before I ask and get in, I would like to say, you know, taking emotion out of this, any heartstrings, any emotion, just looking at it factually, data, reality, and not, you know, what helps us sleep at night. Would we say, since PSVS inception, that the homeless issue that we continually struggle and talk about is better, the same, or worse?
Is that a question for me, Councilman?
Yes.
I would say it is better. By the numbers, it is better. I would also be transparent that I think many members of our community remain frustrated that visually, they don't see some of that improvement. They continue to see the same things over and over. But by the numbers, homelessness is better.
Well, I don't, what numbers? Do we take a census every year and find every homeless person and count them?
We do. And our point in time count is pending for this year. It should be out very soon. But some of the numbers that I would just point to are, the number of folks that are sheltered today that were not sheltered prior. You know, before PSVS, we were sheltering probably around 500 to 600 individuals a year. And right now, we have on closer to 1,000 people that are sheltered as opposed to being on the streets. Also, some of the numbers relate to how many people have been placed into permanent housing. So, I don't have total numbers at top of mind, but top of mind, we've had 450 individuals that prior were on the streets, went into our Brandigale Navigation Center Shelter, and have now been placed into permanent housing, about 450 individuals. And so, we are making progress towards a very big issue, but I would acknowledge that, you know, there's, the level of community frustration related to homelessness is about the same.
Do we do a census in those, with those individuals to find out how many of them are from Bakersfield, live in Bakersfield, and how many of them come to Baker, to come from out of town? Because I had the weirdest conversation with a few social workers when I called Social Services in Los Angeles, and they were kind of in a roundabout, not, not kind of, they were letting me know about Bakersfield services that we've ramped up to help people that are in need, and suggested that I travel to Bakersfield instead of living in LA for support services. And I just wondered how many people that we're spending Bakersfield tax dollars on are actually Bakersfield people?
We do conduct a census. That's part of the point in time count includes where are they from, how long have they lived here, how long have they been homeless. As our flood outreach teams, I say our, but, you know, we contract with them, so does the county, behavioral health, they keep track in our HMIS system of how many individuals call Bakersfield home. I would qualify some of the data that I'll give you, that it is hard to validate some of the data, because an individual may say that they're from Bakersfield, but that's self-reporting, and we don't have ways to necessarily validate some of that information. But 90% of the individuals that are in our HMIS system report that their, their county of origin is Kern County.
Okay. So, I'll be totally frank and honest. I don't believe that homelessness has gotten better or stayed the same. I deal with it regularly, see the tents, count them on my way to work. It's, in my opinion, getting worse. We've got guys chasing each other with swords and stealing more. I've got more crime happening in, in and around the auto mall than I've ever seen in regards to homelessness. I see tents on the side of the freeway that I didn't see a few years ago, and they just keep expanding. So, I don't know how we can, I don't know how we've come to that conclusion. I know we take a census, but I don't believe it, and I don't think most of our constituents believe that. But that, it is what it is. I just would, I would venture to have the conversation in regards to, you know, what insanity is at its core, doing the same thing over and over and over again, and expecting a different result. I mean, we're, we're talking about millions of dollars to organizations that have received tens of tens of millions of dollars. Taxpaying money, tens of millions of dollars. And we've talked about what the biggest issue facing our city when it comes to public safety. And I mean, I look, and, you know, it's hard for me to think that we could have maybe reallocated a lot of this homeless money toward fixing what we all know what we need to do, to hold people that break the law accountable. I think we could have probably done it years ago. And so, you know, just my question for thought is, at one point in time, will we, you know, it's just a ponder, it's rhetorical, think about it. What point in time are we gonna stop feeding the problem and actually start feeding the solution, so that taxpayers are getting what they're paying for in taxes? And that's all I'll say about that. I have a major problem with giving more money to organizations when I feel like the problem is the same. I don't think we're treating the problem by any means. I think we're just prolonging the inevitable. But in regards to the budget, there's no pages on here, so I don't know how I'm gonna communicate with you, what page I'm on, but under, let me see what category this is. Oh, before I even get into that, I didn't see any, I would really like to see organizational charts for each department, knowing how each person serves in that department, as well as maybe some basic KPIs, so that we understand the chart flow, the organizational chart flow of each of the departments, so that we can put visual context to those. I would like to, if I can make that a referral, I would like to see that done. I mean, I think it's important for us, if we're gonna make a decision on hundreds of millions of dollars, it would be helpful to understand where those dollars are actually going a little bit deeper. In, it's the City Mayor. I'm gonna get to all of them if we have time, but I had a question. There's a line item for $0.5 million for intensive case management, but there's not much other detail to that. I just, I don't know, what is that for?
So, in our Community Vitality Unit, we've created a special team that addresses our most chronically homeless, and this is following some of the same principles that we followed with our Gun Violence Intervention Program, where we've seen significant reductions by focusing on a smaller number of individuals but are causing greater number of challenges and issues. And so, we created this small amount of funding to create two teams to go and work with probably only, you know, 10 to 25 individuals who are causing the most problems around homelessness and chronic nuisances, and have intensive case management to make sure. Now, these are individuals who've been contacted by other groups and units who are refusing service, and so, but they have long lists of encampments that they go and report to quickly, and so they don't stop and spend a long time with those individuals who are refusing service. But this team's role would be to work intensely with those individuals and try and identify, is there a way to get them into care court? Is there a way to get them into a substance use treatment program? Is there a way to get them into a Prop. 36-type, you know, scenario? And so, the, this is a pilot program, and I failed to mention, we got grant funding for this, and so...
We did, or we do?
We did, we have it. Currently, we have grant funding for this. So it's a $1.5 million grant, that's $0.5 million each year for three years. And it allows us to test whether we see significant reductions in some of our quality-of-life crimes by focusing on individuals who repeatedly have the same offenses over and over again.
So, these are criminals?
Yes.
Okay, so, we know what the solution is for criminals, but we're spending money on not the solution. I don't understand that, but we can move on. Prevention programs, libraries, rec mentoring with 5% annual increase, 525, what is that?
That is for agreement we have with County of Kern to help us activate library spaces, not only to provide better access to just literacy and reading, but also access to libraries as community locations, as we did a study of cities that had done prevention programs, and that had produced good results, and lowered the numbers of some of these young individuals who are ending up repeatedly back into the system and ultimately become those who are committing some of the higher offenses, and what were those prevention programs that had the highest outcomes? We actually did a pilot where we had four different prevention programs, three of those we've chosen since to not continue, but the libraries program is that prevention program that has produced the best results in helping provide access to kids, to tutors and mentors and services to help them reduce their risk of, you know, future issues.
Okay. There's a line item a few spots below that, it says OVIP, Outside Services. I don't know, is that the same as CALVIP? Is that something different?
It's the same. Those are our contracts with our community-based organizations to do case management and outreach with those individuals who are at very high risk of gun violence.
So, are they breaking the law? Are they criminals? Are they just normal people that are flipping out?
It tends to be a mix. Somebody who may be shot at, and may be active in a gang lifestyle, but may not have committed a specific crime that we can point to, but we know they're at higher risk of either being shot again, because they've been shot twice or three times, or that they may be at high risk of wanting to do retaliation. It is a best practice that's proved out to have great results in many communities, and it's been part of the equation to see our more than 50% reduction in shootings and homicides here, is that the law enforcement side is very active, and those that we have, crimes that we can arrest them for are arrested, but those who are at very high risk of potentially committing a crime or being a victim again, we work with them in a case management mode to keep that from happening.
Okay. So you say there's something we've been done, and it's got good results, but it says "new" here. Am I missing something for $300,000? It says "new." Did we get funding from the state, and it fell apart, and now we have to pay for it?
Actually, this was funding that we had identified, the $300,000 piece. We had some funding in Community Vitality that we identified we didn't need to spend there, and so we shifted it over to CALVIP to support those efforts over there.
So has it always been funded through the City Manager's office? Is this, I mean, I hear what you're saying, that so it doesn't make it new?
Well, it is, so it's new from one division to another.
Okay, so different departments paying for it now?
Correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, gotta find the next spot. Oh, for the rental property, how long is the lease for the California Avenue property for the $820,000 a year?
It is through, I believe, sometime in fiscal year '26, '27, that lease will be up.
And when did it start?
It started two years, like about a year and a half, two years ago.
That's like four or five million bucks?
It's a very expensive...
Could have probably built our own on one of our properties, huh?
So that's been one of the conversations we've been having, is, you know, does it make more sense to put that into an asset that is a city asset? At the time, there weren't any city assets, and we had significant space issues, and so that was a temporary solution while we find a permanent solution.
That's a very expensive temporary solution. Okay. I would like to, I mean, I don't like to waste money. I'd like to see that come back. I know I could build a franchise for probably half of that right now. No, inflation, probably that full amount, I could build a franchise. I did have, I think, golly, so much paper. Next up, oh, a lot of the capital outlay, non-structural improvement plans, there wasn't a really descriptions on the sideline for them. I didn't really, I was just curious if that would get updated before or after we vote on the budget, or if that's just gonna be...
Are you referencing the PowerPoint or the budget book?
The book.
And what was the title again of the line item?
Well, there's probably about 50 of them. Capital Outlay Non-Structural Improvements, $360,000, $2.8 million, $688,000, $3.9 million, $5.4 million, $1.3 million. And, I mean, I could spend 10 minutes listing them all, but there's no description on them. I was just curious as to what those were going for. And that was under Public Works.
Thank you. Take a quick look, see if I can have a short answer for that for you.
It's getting me a lot, there's getting me, I mean, there's a decent chunk of them.
Yeah, thanks, Randy.
Hagan Finance Director. So that report that you're looking at is the detail from the budget report?
Uh-huh.
So the actual, those are all CIP accounts, so if you look at the CIP worksheet, there's a separate section for capital improvement projects under Public Works. Those individual lines should tie back to the individual projects you see in the CIP section.
Using the account number, or just the code that's in front of the capital outlay? I don't know even how...
So, I don't have the book in front of me, but...
It's the code in front of the capital outlay.
Yeah, there's a code, a project number within the capital outlay listing that you see for projects, by project, for the Public Works Department. So that, we didn't roll in that specific project number within the detail that you're looking at, but that should tie back, and we can confirm that. I can reach out, and I'll look and confirm that, but that's what that detail that you're looking at, that's just an account number, or account name, but the individual projects are on that separate worksheet. So I can help you with that.
That's perfect. I'll probably reach out to you for some more information, clarity on those. And then I did see a million-dollar EV infrastructure for Public Works.
We have, we've been acting under the state mandate to transition our EV fleets. Now, having said that, we're keenly watching the national policymaking and courts and state policymaking to confirm what requirements will be accurate, but as of this time, it still looks like municipal fleets under the state government code are required to have a certain percentage of our vehicles transition to EV vehicles, and we don't have the infrastructure to charge those today, and so that money's been set aside to start creating that charging infrastructure, so that we can service the vehicles that we're gonna be required to purchase as EV vehicles.
Okay, so, maybe, Jenny, would it be, because that's been shut down on the national level, they've kiboshed it, it's been, I'm very happy about that, because it was just fraud from the beginning. With the state, with that changing at a national level, and the state will have to, I'm sure they'll try and sue, is there any change that we can follow along suit with as a government, or do we have to just, because that mandate is gone?
Mayor, Councilmember Besher Tash, I think the state has actually just recently taken some similar action on the EV. I'd have to look into it. So again, valid question, need to look into it, and I can get back to you before June 11th.
Okay, thank you. I didn't get through the last 120 pages of the book, so I think I will end my questions there.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else wishing to speak? Councilmember, where?
Oh, okay, well, good to go. Good to go. I have just a few questions here. First of all, as mentioned at the beginning of what we're talking about here, that we have a balanced budget. Can we not have a balanced budget?
I believe that the charter says that it has to be balanced.
I believe it does, too. So that's not really an accomplishment, it's just that we did the minimum. Okay. On... On PVS money, I was here at the time that that came in, and there are other people here, too. The point of that money was to provide funding for projects that we needed to produce and make sure that we were using those funds as best we can. And we've gone through this now for a few years. And we've kind of argued back and forth over the years, how much PVS money should we have, and how much should we cap off, so we're never gonna, never gonna use it all. We would have a sum reserve there. And as the years have gone by, we've eaten that away. And so, how much do we have in this budget that the measure is paying for items that basically, the community and me, I understood, that would never be used for ongoing things, and things we're buying that fits within the measure?
I'm not sure I fully understand the question, Councilmember, but I'll try, or I could try and address a couple things, I think, that will speak to your question. So the council adopted a policy that no more than 70% of PSVS would be spent on ongoing costs, and that 60% would be personnel, we would limit personnel costs within PSVS to be about 60%. And our budget, of course, you know, last year, we assumed was gonna be over $100 million. Now, because of the correction with the city and the county tax remittance, this year, it's closer to $96 million, and so next year, we're estimating a $97 million budget for PSVS. 97 being pretty close to 100, it helps with, the percentage is at least me, is, you know, the less math guy than maybe Robert or Randy. So at $97 million, we're spending a little over $60 million on personnel costs. We're close, we're just slightly over the 60% number by a couple percentage points. So we're very close to keeping in line with having, you know, 60% not go, only go to personnel, and what I would consider ongoing costs, we're right at about 70% as well. Because what I add into the ongoing costs on top of personnel are things like the BLNC, the homeless shelter, some of the equipment that we pay for police officers, you know, we include the costs for body cameras, and, you know, their laptops and their vehicles, because you can't have a police officer without a body camera. So that's about 70% as well, right now. But beyond that, we have what we call our recurring operating dollars, and so we've got another $20 million in recurring operating costs that are things like funding to fund our Small Business Assistance Program, our Economic Incentive Program, our EOA Program. We also have, you know, funding in their PRI, you know, type funding for Parks and Recreation. Those, we put in the budget each year, but it's about $20 million, and so that tells you, though, that the $97 million, if you have that, if you include that recurring operating, it's the majority of the $97 million this year. That is true, and that is of concern to me. The good news about the recurring operating is we designed it that way, because those are things that we can cut back easier. So for example, last few years, we funded $1.2 million every year in recurring operating for the purchase of these blighted properties. Well, this year, we said, we're gonna take a million of that away and only have $200,000 there. So those recurring operating costs are things that we can reduce as needed pretty readily, much easier than we would be reducing full programs, or homeless shelter, or staffing. And then what's... And then what's left for the CIP has largely, is largely available because of we've had one-time savings from last year. That's allowing us to also have money for CIP projects. And then, but the biggest portion that is eating into PSVS is not PSVS, it's those other general fund costs. So we have $12 million that's funding ongoing operations in the general fund from the public safety vital services tax. And we've had that discussion a few times. I think the, the problem is not that we've, you know, that we're, we've allocated too much of PSVS to ongoing. It's that, you know, our revenues have, you know, not been sufficient to continue to fund the general fund at the levels that, you know, of same levels of service as we've historically had. Our revenues are not keeping up with the costs to fund the general fund. But that's also a similar challenge and issue that we have to then go and look at, how do we restructure the general fund over time to make sure that it is structurally balanced and that it doesn't draw from PSVS? That's one of our goals that we need to achieve.
Well, I appreciate that, but that, I don't think that answers my question because we shouldn't have. As much as I was involved in this, and there are other people setting up here too, the point of this was we would not go over a certain amount. And this year, we've used everything. It's all used. There's nothing in there. So how do we prevent that? And, and I think constituents in Bakersfield are probably not going to be happy when they find out the major money is not always spent for what it was intended to be.
So Councilmember, we have two different thoughts. One is I, I would argue that we are spending the, the money on the purposes of the measure. We're spending it on public safety. We're spending it on...
Well, that, that's because it was always promised to the, to our constituents that would be at a certain level and it would not go past that. But the way that, the way the measure was put together, you know, we said that and then we kind of ignore it and if we need to go apply it, we'll just blow by it. And that's the problem here. I, I, you know, that money was specifically allocated for certain things. And now if we're taking, how, how much are we taking out? 20,000, 20 million?
For the general fund? Or for what?
Are we taking 12,000?
12 million dollars from PSVS is, is funding general fund operating.
Is that going to continue?
Not indefinitely.
No, no, is that going to continue? What is it going to be next year? I mean, give me an idea. I'm sure you have an idea.
My goal is to reduce that by several million dollars next year.
Is that feasible?
It is. And if I may, the second point I was going to make is just that we, as noted in my budget message to you, on top of balancing our budget, we're going to be having a hiring freeze. And so vacant positions, we, we have some positions that are currently, you know, have been in the recruitment process and, you know, offers have been made. We also have a police academy that's about to start next month, well, in July, that we're going to move forward with the police academy. But, but moving forward, all vacant positions will be frozen indefinitely. We will evaluate that every three months to see what savings we've generated. And the intent of that is to create enough vacancies that we can evaluate which positions that we need going forward and which positions we can live without. We're going to evaluate service level impacts to the community. We're going to evaluate those key performance indicators noted by Councilmember Besher Tash. And we're going to identify a number of positions that we can not include in the budget next year and they'll continue to be frozen this year. And we have to do some restructuring. The good news is we've balanced the budget and we have this next 12 months to reduce some of our personnel costs to make sure that structurally we can afford our, you know, costs of doing business in future years. So we will reduce by several million dollars our budget by next year.
Okay, well, I heard that when we did the measure, that would not exceed certain limits. And now, now I think we're, we've gone past that. Another question I have is where, where is, is the open door shelter construction, is, is that coming out of special funds or where's that coming from?
So last year, we funded out of ARPA, the two and a half million from last year. This year, it was proposed to come out of the public safety vital services tax. Councilmember Gonzalez just made a motion or a referral, not a motion, to fund it out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund instead. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund has been funded largely by public safety vital services tax, but it's also been funded by matches from the state. And the state has put in several million dollars to match our contributions to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So this year, if council adopts a budget that includes open door network, it would likely come out of PSVS or the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
But there's no money in PSVS right now for that.
As, as the budget book stands, there was sufficient funding to include that as a one-time cost. If we do it out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, that creates savings in PSVS that we can bank.
Okay, well, I think we've shortchanged a lot of people that voted for this.
Mr. Clegg, if the 12 million from PSVS had not been moved to the general fund, would we have a balanced budget?
Well, again, the general fund is an entire fund. PSVS is general fund and general fund, there's general fund, I guess traditional general fund. Would the general fund be balanced? No.
Yes, that's the question.
Yeah, the general fund would not be balanced as a, absent PSVS.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
And to follow up on that then, if Measure N did not pass or we, there was no Measure N, and this year we would have to make 12 and a half million dollars worth of cuts, correct?
Correct, to general fund employees.
And what's the majority of the general fund?
70% of the general fund is personnel and about 60-plus percent of that personnel is public safety.
So the majority of the cuts then, from the general fund would have to come from public safety.
That is correct.
And one of the primary purposes of Measure N was public safety. So I, I'm a bit confused by the line of questioning here because we're trying to preserve, when, when we approached the, the voters with Measure N, it was to preserve and enhance vital services. We knew that we had experienced two decades worth of cut after cut after cut, cutting core services to the bare bone in this city, where we were not delivering high-quality services to our constituents. And Measure N has helped us get further ahead, enhancing city services. We have now a net gain of how many police officers?
Our net gain is about...
If you start with 385 police officers that we had hired in 2018, how many do we have today?
If we go from that, that number of how many were hired, we're close to, you know, 80-plus officers.
Okay. Incredible. Through, within the last five years, and that, it doesn't stop there. We, we've enhanced many of our streets, as we just talked about, with road repairs. We've enhanced many of our parks. In fact, the very first park, the very first park, the very first expenditure from Public Safety and Vital Services Initiative was for Mesa Marin Sports Complex in Ward Three. We, we, we actually made an expenditure of $2 million. And the reason why we did that was because we received a state match grant. Am I, am I factually accurate here?
I'll have to admit, Councilmember, I know we received a grant for the Sports Village.
Okay.
I think Mesa Marin was actually an $8 million allocation without grant match and Sports Village was a $3 million allocation with additional grant funds on top.
But my point still remains is that the first expenditure was for our parks and it was actually a park in Ward Three, which I wasn't mad about. It actually supports the betterment in the entire community, all of our families. And so, you know, I think we need to continue to press forward and to remember the vision that we started a few years ago in that we want a better, more vibrant, we want a safer community. And we, it's, it's fair game to ask questions about all of these different topics by, by all means. I think we need to dig in deep. Councilmember Besher Tash, I appreciated your question about, you know, how many people actually are coming from the outside? That's a question that I've had for years now and something that I've been hoping that we could address in our shelter is having, establishing some sort of a, a requirement or some sort of process to identify where people were first from. And if we can verify that they're actually from our community, because that is what the taxpayers paid for. They paid for a shelter to help the people who are unhoused in Bakersfield. And that's what we ought to do. And so we need to safeguard our resources. I'm right there with you. And so I think all of those things are wonderful conversations, but when we start saying, suggesting that somehow we're, we're not doing what we told the voters to do, that, I think that's, that's a real disservice to the community because I know many people at City Hall, I know many of us on the, on the city council have worked endlessly to try to improve the service delivery for our community. Is it perfect? No. Do we have a lot more to do? Yes, we do. Do we still have an inflow problem with more and more people falling into homelessness? Yes, we do. We still have these problems, but I, I want to, I want to continue finding solutions as opposed to us making suggestions that somehow this measure is not failing, when in fact, this measure is the only thing really in the last 25 years is it's actually helped enhance the city, has actually helped us get ahead. Anyway. Oh, and one last thing, the California Avenue property, $800,000 a year. I agree, it is a lot of money to pay in lease. That's just throwing our money away. We should actually invest in an asset. We should probably buy the B of A building or buy another property so that we can actually have an asset that we're paying for and, and lease the rest of the building. Anyway, that's it.
Councilmember Besher Tash.
What's the total pot for the EOA?
When you say the total pot existing funding...
How much goes into that? Well, I mean, does it get replenished every year by various accounts?
So yeah, we've, two, two different things actually, and I'll, I'll take opportunity because the EOA program was designed to actually be funded off of tax increment. And we have actually not held back that property tax increment. Instead, it's been, you know, funded through PSVS for a number of years. Now, the trade-off is if we hold back that tax increment, that reduces funding to the general fund. But every year, for the last five years, we've put about $700,000 into the EOA program. The assumption was that's about $100,000 for each of the seven EOAs. This year, I'm only recommending $300,000 go into the EOA program instead of 700 because we looked at the balances of each of those EOAs. Some of them have been fully spent down, but others continue to have a reasonable balance to $300,000 balance. And so we're only recommending $300,000 to replenish those EOAs that have basically spent their entire balance.
Can I ask for a list of what's been spent through EOAs for the last few years to be emailed over to me? That would be, I'd like to know. I, I mean, I've been here only for five months, but I feel like a CEO is going to the same wards over and over and over again. And I didn't know what the rules were, how people would, how business people would, how we review and rate those decisions before we give taxpayer money away to, to business people.
If I may, Councilmember, as much for staff to record this, that in addition to, we, we have a, a tracking sheet of all the EOAs that we've awarded, but we can also share with you the program guidelines. We have a, a thick program guidelines and an EOA map that we can all share with you. And the intent of the EOA program was to try and stimulate redevelopment and revitalization of business districts that were a little more rundown and a little more disadvantaged. And so those seven districts were created, you know, in those business districts that had some of those issues. And so there is not an EOA in every one of our wards. But it is, you know, we based it off of some of the CDBG and Census Track data around some of those commercial districts. But it's always the purview of the council to evaluate whether we have the right number of EOAs or, you know, whether we want to consider other EOAs.
So if I'm hearing you right, there's business owners and constituents that live in wards that would not see the benefit of where their tax dollars are going in reference to these districts, potentially?
Yeah, they, they wouldn't have the access to apply for one of those grants. Again, one of the, the thoughts is if we can stimulate these business districts, get them back doing more business, more sales tax, it's better for everyone. But you're right, they would not be able to apply for those grants.
Because essentially, they're propping up and funding development in an area that they don't necessarily live or work in.
That's correct.
They're not seeing the benefit of their own tax dollars.
Well, again, as applicants know, they might see the benefits as the economy overall improves and we get more tax revenues into the city, but they would not benefit as applicants, no.
Okay. And do we track how many businesses have applied and gotten that and have gone under or moved away?
We do.
Cool. That would be super fantastic to get. I like to simplify things as much as possible because I'm a father of three kids and I, I mean, in regards to just funding and, and the homelessness, I, I just think of, of Halloween and your lights on your front porch that lets everybody know, come knock on my door, I've got candy for you, versus putting a no trespassing sign up in your front yard so that people know, don't go on this guy's property or I'm going to get in trouble. And I think that we've turned the light on as a city and said, come on over. We've got lots of candy and resources that our constituents are funding with tax dollars to take care of you, instead of allocating money to actually fixing the problem. And, and I just, it's important that at some point in time, we have a shift of our thought process so that we can do right by our people. It, it has to be done. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't, it's frustrating. It's incredibly frustrating. And I think that, and it's not a matter of you're wrong or right. It has nothing to do with being wrong or right. It has to be, it has to do with being effective. And if we're going to argue about who's wrong or who's right, every stinking meeting, we are wasting our time. How are we going to effectively move Bakersfield into a place where my kids have an enjoyable town where they can grow up, invest their money in their livelihoods and have something to enjoy? At some point in time, we have to dial it back and stop making this about pet projects and what makes us happy, or who's right and who's wrong, or even party lines. It's what is good for our people. Are we protecting our people or are we hurting our people? Are we stimulating our economy or are we hurting our economy? Are we keeping the tax money local? Are we taking care of the people that pay taxes? Or are we spending more money and resources on those that are never going to pay taxes? And at one point in time, are we going to open our eyes to do right by each other and by our people? Goodness sakes. I mean, this isn't need to be something that gets beat over the head, but how many more millions of dollars are we going to spend? I mean, how many more years can we sustain this? I think there was a little discrepancy in the conversation between you and Mr. Gonzalez when he talked about if we didn't have PSVS, if 12 million, no, we'd have $100 million loss if PSVS didn't exist, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah. Now I'm finished, I promise this time.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, and it's an incomplete list, but I wanted to take a moment to just, on behalf of the 62,000 constituents that I represent in Ward One, put together a quick and short list of the many reasons why, you know, we are appreciative of the work that has been done by City Hall and, and the investments that have been made by this council that have really impacted. And I apologize to Councilmember Gonzalez because... And I apologize to Councilmember Gonzalez because I would be remiss if I didn't also acknowledge some of the old parts of Ward 1 and some of the investments that we've partnered together. But I just want to highlight some of the great work that's happened over the past couple of years. You know, the installment of Linell Brahma, the, I believe, 63rd newest park in the city of Bakersfield, the investment that was referred to earlier into our library system, which has had tremendous impacts, positive benefits for the youth in our communities, particularly in disadvantaged communities. One of them in the old Ward 1, now Ward 2, at Holloway Gonzalez Library that reopened for that community. We have received $22 million through the Transformative Climate Communities Grant. It should have been double that, but the federal government reneged on its agreement. But still, we have 22 million for neighborhood revitalization in parts of Ward 2 and Ward 1 through TCC. We worked together to rehab Union Avenue, which looks fabulous and is night and day, much safer street for us to travel on, whether we're biking, walking, or traveling by vehicle down that roadway. I'm hopeful one day that we'll head south of Brundage Lane and south of Highway 58, head deeper into Ward 1. You know, can't talk enough about how great the park rangers have been for our community, keeping our parks safe, making sure that we are opening and closing those gates to keep folks out at night, you know, who are, you know, sometimes not doing the best of things in our parks. Our rapid response teams have expanded, our code enforcement teams have expanded. Our ability to respond to homeless encampments has significantly gotten faster across the board, across the city. We're able to get to some of the hotspots in the riverbed, which at one point was, you know, one of the worst situations when it comes to homelessness in our city. None of that has to do with police. But let's also talk about police. Let's also talk about how since 2020, we've reduced gun violence by a significant margin. We continue to make progress on that front. We have significantly reduced homicides. We have saved lives by the investments that we've made through the California Violence Intervention Prevention Program. And we've also, at the same time, increased complement by 88 sworn officers across the city. And we've also managed to reduce our response times for Priority 1 and Priority 2 calls. And so, I just want to do that as a temperature check and to remind the community, to remind the citizens that we are making progress. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. Do we still have a lot of work to be done? Absolutely. Are we currently in, you know, some challenging budget times? For sure. But I am proud of the city manager for taking our feedback and putting together not just a balanced budget, but a proactive budget that builds in some savings for the future so that when we come back at mid-year, we're hopeful that we're going to have more information on what the state's looking like, more information about what the federal administration's plan is moving forward so that we can build an even healthier budget in the future. I'm appreciative of all the work that's been put into this budget book, but also appreciative of the fact that we are starting to change our mindset around how we utilize PSVS funds and TOT funds to offset the general fund. We know that there is, there are some challenges in the general fund. And I think it's important that we continue to make cuts where appropriate, learn to do more with less. And overall, just want to give kudos to Randy, Robert, the entire city management team, and Christian Clegg for really doing a good job on this budget. So with that, I also want to support the referral tonight that we utilize potentially Affordable Housing Trust Fund dollars to cover the cost of the 2.5 million for the open door network. I think that's only going to continue to add to the savings that we're building into this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad everybody went down the, went down and enjoyed all the things they bought and spent money for. But that has nothing to do with what I am trying to get expressed and understood. We got PSVS on the condition that we would not spend money that's already been on our books. We wouldn't spend that and PSVS would be allocated to new things. New police officers, new whatever. And the public was told we won't use the money, the money in PSVS for the expenses that we have in the original general fund. This year, five years in, this year, we've used $12 million of money that we should not have used. Now, I'm not going to argue about who spent what or anything else. I'm telling you, we did a disservice to the people of this community and we owe them 12 million bucks.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir, Vice Mayor.
First, I just want to acknowledge and appreciate the conversation that my colleagues have had. It is a very large responsibility, both for city management, folks leading our different departments, as well as Mayor, City Council, to balance what we're hearing from constituents. So, I want to take the time to appreciate everyone who's been involved in the process, from the budget team, like I said, our city staff, everyone down at City Hall, folks who worked, even put the packet together, creating the document itself. Everyone plays a tremendous role and it is not easy to balance all of what we bring you as seven to eight folks who are hearing what our residents are sharing, while also making sure that our city is in a fiscally responsible place, not only this year, but also into the future. I do think that two truths can coexist, though. We can both appreciate that we have a balanced budget, as Councilmember Gonzalez shared, where colleagues in other cities are reaching out and asking what the condition of this fiscal year looks like. And it's no secret that the families throughout the city of Bakersfield are feeling the pinch in each household. There is a, an economic moment that we are all feeling. Every household throughout all of our wards are making really tough decisions within their homes, and the city is not exempt from that. We are making some tough decisions here. So, when families are being careful, you know, we at the city are also feeling what we're experiencing throughout the city, the county, state, as well as nationally. But the business and the services of the city cannot stop and/or slow down because we hold a tremendous responsibility. And when we let our residents down, we definitely hear that, feel that, the same. So, a lot of the programs that, you know, we're being careful with and being considerate with are preventative and making sure that those are programs that allow for us to put into place a lot of the same goals that are shared, but approaches can be different. This is my third budget cycle on the city council, so there is much to learn. But also, there is a lot that has been learned. And I remember my first budget cycle as well, and there were many questions to go around. And like Councilmember Arias, I appreciate you going through all of the ways in which the residents of Ward 1 have felt the gift of the city being responsible in serving the needs as we hear them in our city. It was early on in my first year, just a quick story, but I had met with, at the time, Parks Director Rick Anthony. And I said, Rick, there is this basketball court in my ward, in Ward 7, at Stone Creek Park. And I can honestly say this basketball court is the anchor of this park and this community. I grew up playing basketball here. I also have seen the attendance at this park completely disappear because of the condition of this basketball court. I said, Rick, this is my first priority. I know I just joined a month ago, but what can we do? You know, is there money? And he's like, well, there's this parry account. I'm like, tell me more. And so, he starts explaining it. I'm like, okay, so it sounds like we're going to get a new basketball court at Stone Creek Park. And sure enough, we got a basketball court within months. I don't know, weeks. I was actually surprised it went up because Rick didn't even update me. It was just up and I passed by and all these kids were playing basketball. And I can honestly say that that park has come back to life. And the kids, even at the park, are taking care of it. We have bike stands at the park now. We have a volleyball court. There's an annual volleyball tournament that happens now every single year. And there's prizes that go out. And the folks who attend that park regularly now know they're park rangers by first name. And they're like, we don't even need to call you anymore, Muntbree. We just talk to the park rangers. And I'm like, great, this is exactly how it was supposed to work. So, the systems that we've invested in are working. And I'll tell you, growing up, those nets on those basketball courts would always disappear, and I've seen those nets stay in place. And for me, that's a sign that, from the teenagers to the elderly, they are taking care of the park and their community. And when I think of things that prevent violence, that make folks feel safe, really, in city planning, it's where people live, work, and play. And if we can take care of those spaces while balancing different priorities, I think that's a good goal to have. I've mentioned a few already, but to build on Councilmember Arias's point, earlier, a couple of months ago, I had the honor of joining Supervisor Flores at Wilson Library for the ribbon cutting to celebrate the renovation and remodeling of my childhood library. And for me, that was a special place because it's where I learned how to read as a kid. My parents were working, my mom was delivering mail, my dad was, you know, driving an 18-wheeler across the nation delivering goods. So, the library was my place of community. And it's where I learned to read. It's where I maxed out how many books I could check out every week as well. But to see that library be renovated and come back to life and full of kids and full of community, people on these computers and learning and very cool library card designs. I don't know if you've checked them out. But I share that to say that institutions that have been important to all of us, we're continuing to see investment in those. And that library becomes a community hub that then becomes prevention from young folks doing other things. And those are the values of those public spaces. I usually contact our department heads or Christian when there's an SOS. And there's long-range planning and then there's, I'm hearing about this pretty constantly, how can we fix this? And another example I wanted to share was seeing a continuous sidewalk be built in Ward 7. And while we didn't have the funds actually in order to finish this sidewalk, you know, our department heads put their minds together and said, we can use a different type of material. We can figure out a way to make sure that people have a safe way to walk on this dirt path that's right next to the road and make sure that we have some sort of divider to keep people safe. And today, people are able to, elderly are able to walk to their church because of department heads that got creative in a budget pinch. And the last one I'll share is a major repaving that happened in Ward 7, which was Panama Lane. I call it Panama Expressway because it is literally a highway at this point. But this was something I was incredibly excited about because of how often, not only in my on it, but I know it's a major throwaway for folks that are traveling in the southern part of our city. And not only people in cars, but also children on bikes, elderly that are going to the nearby neighborhood shops. And I share this example because that roadway has completely changed. It's altered, and I've received so much positive feedback from community as to even this intersection where it was just uneven and you would fly over it. And it wasn't even something that we really advertised. The city just went, folks just went and got it done. And that was a massive improvement for a part of town where we are seeing an economic boom, a residential boom. It is just expanding, growing exponentially. To build on Councilmember Bashir Tosh's point as well, where we are studying where our city is growing, how it's growing, and how we support that. And I want to illustrate all of these examples because they're the examples I've seen. I was inspired by Councilmember Arias's points. But also, to just highlight that sometimes it's just the small and significant changes that we make within communities that can vastly improve the quality of life of our residents. And those are the needs that we're hearing. And also, being stewards of tax dollars and being stewards of community sentiment and reacting to that and being responsible. I wanted to thank staff for getting us to this point. And as we continue to have conversations about the budget, really appreciating the fact that we have a balanced budget in a moment when a lot of cities are not experiencing the same. Of course, we have opportunities to save more. And Christian, our city manager, Christian Clegg, has shared that one of those, one of those ways in which we will achieve that is a hiring freeze and looking at other ways in which we conserve money and different techniques and tactics that we entrust that our department heads will do. And City Council here is also committed to making sure that we achieve that as a collective team. So, I wanted to appreciate the conversation up here. Wanted to appreciate our city staff and just thank you for, as I go into my third cycle of a budget, getting a budget passed, just sharing some of my own reflections and what I'm keeping in mind as we go forward. Thank you. Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion was unanimously approved.
Thank you, and we stand adjourned at 4:57. We'll start the next meeting at 5:15. And welcome to all of you, and we're just so glad to have you engage in the civic process. We had the pleasure tonight of having Chaplain Steve White offer the invocation. He's a volunteer chaplain, and he's been volunteering since 2022. And he was formerly a citizen volunteer from 2018 to 2022. Prior to that, he worked for 40 years in the corporate field. Following the invocation, we have U.S. Army veteran Anthony Noble, who will lead us in the pledge. Mr. Noble is a Kern County Veteran Services, Senior Veteran Service Representative. He served in Iraq from 2007 to '09 in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom. And we cannot be more grateful for all of those who served. Mr. Noble is currently using his military experience to champion advocacy and the cause to get good services for veterans and their families. And we're just so grateful to both of you for your volunteerism. Would you please stand?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council members put us the opportunity tonight to be here, representing the chaplain of the peer support group of the Bakersfield Police Department. Will you pray with me? Most gracious, heavenly Father, as we come together tonight in this place, we do so out of so much to be thankful for. We're thankful for your love. We're thankful for your forgiveness. And we're thankful for your blessings. Lord, one of the blessings that we cannot overlook is this beautiful town which you've given us here called Bakersfield, my home. And Lord, I just thank you for the opportunity we have to do the business called by the people, by this group of people, Lord, and council members. And Lord, I just ask that you give them the wisdom and the knowledge, the understanding to make the decision, Father, that we will all support because of your involvement and your hands. Lord, I am just thankful for the many people of Bakersfield. I'm thoughtful of the first responders, Lord, our doctors, our nurses, our schoolteachers, Father, our businessmen, both public and private, and so many others who have- Father, our businessmen, both public and private, and so many others who have helped make this city the city that I call home, and many others. Lord, bless the time that we have tonight here. Bless those who will be speaking, that they will feel your presence and your guidance in the decision that needs to be made. For I pray these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Please stay standing and join me on the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. You may be seated. And thank you to both of you for being here tonight. You're welcome to leave at this point, but you're welcome to stay and join us too. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons. And as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the city council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, hate speech, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience. In keeping with council's resolution, public statements are received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk for public statements. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray next to the speaker's podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you'll be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I'll call for you at the appropriate time. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you'll be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Merrick, we've received one speaker card regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda. The speaker is Sri Charan Samudrala.
Thank you. Welcome, and please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Sri Charan Samudrala. I just wanted to, or hi, Mayor Go and council. I just wanted to give a comment regarding the city's subdivision standards and their role in traffic safety. So where I live, I live in northeast Bakersfield, and there's a lot of new development going around. And I just, I was looking at the subdivision standards that most of these developments like follow, and I noticed that there is not, like, sorry, it's my first time speaking here.
That's OK. Just take your time.
Yeah, there's like, I feel like there could be better standards for like bike lanes and lane widths. For example, like the bike lanes right now, they're very narrow and they don't require any buffering or like vertical delineation, which is actually like less safe for cyclists using them. And also, the lane widths are 12 feet by standard, which, for some context, freeway, like interstate highway standards are also 12 feet. So we're kind of just indicating to drivers that they can go pretty fast on our streets. And so if the council can make any sort of referral to Public Works or anything to change those subdivision standards, I think that'd be a good idea, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have any others in this category?
Merrick, that was our only speaker.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the comments. I've been preaching that song for 12 years now, and I think that we're going to make some progress with the subdivision standards soon for streets. And I agree, lane widths are too wide and bike lanes too narrow, and buffers are wonderful. So I hope to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cor.
Sri Charan, thank you for your comments. I feel like we have a city planner in the making, so City of Bakersfield, we could definitely use your perspectives. And it's nice to hear our youth come and share just their thoughts and perspectives on their neighborhoods. And if you're not already studying city planning, then I highly suggest it, and we could definitely utilize those skills. So thank you, thank you for your comments today. You did great. Your first time speaking publicly. Come back often, and we'd love to hear more from you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Do we have any public statements listed on the agenda?
Merrick, we've received four public speaker cards regarding item 7I2. The first public speaker is Daryl Ebel.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Daryl Ebel, and I'm regarding item 7I2, St. Vincent de Paul. As I said, my name is Daryl Ebel, and I've been on the Board of Directors for St. Vincent de Paul the last 12 years. The past three, I've been the chairman of the board. And I just wanted to start by saying thank you to the city for having us on the agenda this evening and considering the measure in funding for the upgrade to our restroom and shower facilities and the kitchen facilities at our center down on Baker Street. As a lifelong resident of Bakersfield, I, I think we are all aware of the problem that homelessness has become in our community. When I joined the Board of Directors back in 2013, we were basically a self-sufficient organization. We operated two thrift stores, one on South Baker Street and one up in Tehachapi. And we used the monthly income and profit from those stores to pay a small staff of employees meager salaries to operate our respite center and to provide some basic life services to our guests. Those included a couple hot meals per day, a safe place to spend the day, a place to take a shower, and some basic clothing and hygiene needs. Unfortunately, since I joined the board, the homeless situation in Bakersfield has grown exponentially. The amount of people that we serve daily has increased many times since 2013. We closed our thrift store in 2022. Frankly, the market for thrift stores in Bakersfield had shrunk, and the amount of competition operating our thrift store became a financial burden to the organization. But St. Vincent's has survived. We're driven by a small group of employees and volunteers with big hearts that continue to carry out our mission of serving those in most need in our community. The community in whole continues to be very generous in supporting our organization with donations that help us survive. Even recent relationships with providers like Good Samaritan Hospital and Kern Family Healthcare Systems have helped us combine resources to effectively serve in different capacities those in need. Despite our current success, we still need the help. The bottom line is because of the age of our center, originally constructed in 2003, the number of guests we serve every day, our facilities are wearing out. The proposed grant to help with upgrades and refurbishment is greatly needed. St. Vincent's hopes this council considers our item favorably in helping us carrying out those services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ebel. Next speaker, please. Again, each speaker is given a two-minute time limit, and each agenda item is limited to 20 minutes. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item.
Michael Torres.
Welcome. Go ahead and step right there. Thank you, and introduce yourself, please.
My name is Michael Torres. I want to thank you guys for at least hearing us out tonight. I've been going to St. Vincent's since about '99. You know, I've seen it grow over the years. St. Vincent's is a place where I went to better myself. You know, they provided food, clothing, showers, a place where I could take a shower when I was in need of one. They also, you know, went way beyond and helped me when I was in the process of getting my daughter back. And I currently, I currently am out in the neighborhood and distributing Narcan in the neighborhood. But I notice that their bathrooms are a little outdated. I used to volunteer in the kitchen. They have stuff that's just outdated, and it's not up to capacity to feed that many people pre-COVID. And now I have noticed a lot more people going to the center. And also, and also, when I talk to some of the officers out in the community, you know, they tell me, you know what, we're not in the area as much. We don't get reports out there that much. When I drive by the area, it's a lot cleaner. I know for me, when I was homeless, that shower meant a lot to me so I could go out and do what I have to do to make myself a productive member of society. Like I said, the space could really use an upgrade on the bathrooms and showers. There's a lot, a lot more homeless people coming into the area. And St. Vincent's tries very hard to meet the thing, but sometimes there's time where it's too many people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torres, and congratulations on getting your daughter back. Next speaker, please.
Oscar Zubrian.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. Oscar Zubrian. Good evening. My name is Oscar Zubrian, and I'm the operations manager at St. Vincent de Paul. I want to start off by saying thank you, and this is such a special and important moment tonight for St. Vincent de Paul. And I thank Mayor Go, all the council members for this opportunity. And to Councilmember Gonzalez, thank you for your work and dedication to all of us in Ward Two. Thank you. For over 70 years, St. Vincent de Paul has been doing what we do, which is help the poor and the homeless. You know, we continue to do so with a small staff, as Daryl mentioned, and supported by countless volunteers and donors. Thankfully, we have partnerships like we do with Good Samaritan Hospital and Kern Family Healthcare, too, as well. And then we continue these efforts, the same efforts that started seven decades ago continue now. And now we are serving well over 400 meals a day. Just in the past two weeks, we've exceeded 500 meals a day. And thankfully, again, with the support of the community, we've been able to do so. In our shower use, just this year alone, we're now providing about 1,200 showers a month. That's a lot. That's a lot. And yes, you've heard already that our bathrooms and our showers, they need to be upgraded. You know, in partnership with Good Sam, you know, our guests now receive onsite medical care, clinical care, substance use counseling, life skills training, housing assistance, and things like that. We also collaborate a lot with the Homeless Collaborative here in town, and we help transition folks over to housing. I just want to, I come to again to ask for your support in funding our need to upgrade our bathrooms and showers and kitchen. Again, almost weekly, I know this for a fact, almost weekly, there's a repair ticket that comes to my desk, and I have to, you know, sign off on that and get it done. Why? Because our guests that are on the streets, they come to our day center, and they need those services. They need that care. So we want to be able to continue to provide that, and I just thank you again for your support. Take care.
Thank you for your service to our most vulnerable. Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Lauren Skidmore.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. My name is Lauren Skidmore, CEO of the Open Door Network, a homeless service provider, victim service provider in Kern County. I'm here speaking in support of this agreement and the conditional use permit. We are a partner that works alongside St. Vincent de Paul on a daily basis, and we're soon to be a neighbor to their facility. To create perspective, aside from living on the streets, St. Vincent de Paul is the lowest barrier facility in our community. The residents that utilize this facility are facing some of life's hardest challenges, including abuse, human trafficking, substance use, and mental health issues. These upgrades not only are necessary for these facilities, but they're assisting us in turning around these lives that we know are facing challenges. For example, in 2022, the Open Door Network closed our facility and ended our meal distributions due to fights, deaths, and concerns that were close to our childcare and the families staying at our shelter. St. Vincent de Paul stepped up. They offered the meals that we could no longer offer. I know the homeless issue is frustrating and feels like a drain on many resources. But I can also assure you that St. Vincent de Paul is aiming to be an efficient, trusted homeless partner that is providing quality services to those that are truly in need. Their facility is the first step to recovery, and for us at the Open Door Network, a partner and friend in this difficult work, I urge you to support this CUP and agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skidmore, and thank you also for your service to our most vulnerable. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers for this section?
Merrick, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Ms. Skidmore, for your comments and for being here in support of St. Vincent de Paul. What I love about it is it demonstrates the level of collaboration and partnership among different agencies, which is what we need in our community in order for us to resolve this persistent crisis, for us to come together and to work together collaboratively in a positive way to look for solutions and incessantly. Mr. Zubrian, thank you so much for your leadership and your partnership throughout the years. On many occasions, we've worked together, sometimes in very short notice and sometimes in emergency situations. And you've always stepped up, and you and your team have been wonderful to work with in the community. I consider St. Vincent de Paul a true good neighbor in that they, you have always tried and strived to do your best to address issues of concern for the business owners and residents in the area. And that means so much to me and so much to my community, our community on Baker Street in Old Town Kern. Mr. Torres, thank you for your testimonial. It was very heartfelt. And only you can deliver that message of hope and inspiration and what can happen when we have a facility like St. Vincent de Paul. To give people, individuals, first and foremost, a sense of refuge, right? And a time and opportunity to just rest, to take a shower, to get a meal, and get back on your feet, to be, as you put it, a productive member of our community. That's beautiful. That's what we want for every single person in our community, for them to have a sense of hope and dignity and to be productive members of our community. And that's why St. Vincent de Paul is so important to Bakersfield. You know, I think a lot about, you know, these stories throughout time of heroes. And oftentimes, the heroes are somewhat forgotten and undervalued, underappreciated, and sometimes unnoticed. But they still answer the call. They still address the needs for the betterment of all people. And I think unfortunately, too often, we forget about our superheroes in this community. Folks like Mr. Ebel and Ebel and your Board of Directors and all the volunteers who report to work day in and day out to keep St. Vincent de Paul going as a volunteer organization, a private donation-run organization, to meet so many needs in our community without anyone in the greater public really realizing it. All that, all that work, all those lives you're saving, all that harm you're reducing, the refuge you provide, sense of hope, sense of hope you create in the lives of so many who are experiencing so many dark, traumatic experiences, that is remarkable. So I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your work, and I am so eager to vote on this particular item tonight and to support the city's partnership with St. Vincent de Paul.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Thank you.
Appointment's item 6A. One appointment, mayor's alternate to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee due to an existing vacancy. Applications for appointment have been received from Nayeli Franco and Paul Yanez.
Thank you. This appointment is by Ward. Therefore, I have the pleasure of nominating Paul Yanez as my alternate to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee. Mr. Yanez has served for 10 years in Ward Seven. He's just been such a faithful volunteer. He's out there on a regular basis every week and just a leader with our Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Team for the Great American Cleanup. We can always... We can always count on him. Vice Mayor, for the motion?
A motion to appoint Paul Yanez as the mayor's alternate to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please. Next appointment.
Appointments Item 6B, one appointment to the Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee, appointment by the vice mayor of one regular and one alternate member from the city council.
Vice Mayor, you now may nominate two council members to serve as the regular and alternate members of the Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to today nominate Councilmember Eric Adias to the Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee and one alternate member as Councilmember Larry Coman. Thank you for being volunteered slash voluntold to serve your time with the Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee. Motion to appoint these two gentlemen.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, next appointment item, please.
Appointment Item 6C, appointment of conference committee members to fill at-large vacancy on Golden Empire Transit District Board of Directors.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to appoint to the conference committee to fill the at-large vacancy on the Golden Empire Transit District Board of Directors. I'd like to appoint Councilmember Andre Gonzalez and Councilmember Eric Adias. Thank you for volunteering your time.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. That was a motion.
Sorry. Motion to appoint Councilmember Gonzalez and Councilmember Adias to the conference committee members for GEPUS.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Bashir Tash voting no.
Thank you. And now, Madam Clerk, next item, please. Consent calendar.
Consent calendar, Item 7A through 7I for approval. A staff memorandum has been provided for Item 7E8, transmitting the signed agreement.
Thank you. Colleagues, has anybody wished to recuse themselves? And I already have requests for items to be polled. So we have Councilmember Coman, who would wish to poll Item 7G5, and Councilmember Bashir Tash, who would like to poll 7I1 and 7I2. Vice Mayor?
A motion to approve consent calendar with the exception of Items 7I1, 7I2, and 7G5.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Coman, 7G5.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item for Adaptive Signal Coordination Project on Callaway Drive. I had a couple of questions for staff, and I apologize for not getting with you before to ask these questions, but this is exactly the kind of project I have been talking about because I talk about that we have smart cars and stupid intersections, you know, that the cars could talk to each other, and we're going to have autonomous vehicles, and then you have a traffic light that, you know, stops the traffic on Sunday because it doesn't know what day it is, there's nobody coming along. And I get frustrated at how much time I spend at traffic lights waiting for nobody, or nobody coming. So I appreciate this project. I did have a question, though, actually, two questions. What performance metrics are you going to use to determine if this worked or doesn't work, and what, you know, what are we going to use to decide if we want to do more of
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Coman, some of that information I'll need to talk more with our traffic engineer, but just thinking about what metrics we would use, probably looking at traffic counts through that corridor to see, you know, with the traffic counts, we could also measure the speeds going through there and seeing what the before and after is of the project.
Okay. Sorry to put you on the spot. The last question is, are there any other phases of this project planned? This is like one section of Callaway Drive, but are there other sections planned, or is this just a test?
No, we've done projects like this before. Some of them, I don't think have been fully implemented yet, but it is something that we're continuing to work on and program in this current year, next fiscal year. So this is, I don't view this as a pilot. It's something that we're trying to be more proactive in to help with these types of projects, and again, the goal is carbon reduction.
Okay. And then the last item is, this is fully funded by the federal government?
I am seeing 88%. There's a little bit remainder that's, could be a combination of gas tax and PSVS, but the majority of the project is barely funded.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 7G5.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Your screen is blank. Can we get some help for Councilmember Weir's screen tech services? And Madam Clerk, would you just take a real call, please? Vote.
Vice Mayor Core?
Yes.
Councilmember Adias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Coman?
Yes.
Councilmember Bashir Tash?
Yes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Our next item is public hearings. Each side will be allowed... Oh, I'm so sorry. We forgot two big items. Councilmember Bashir Tash, 7I1.
I don't really have much to say about 7I1, but I would like to make a motion to not approve that.
Okay. You have a motion? If anybody wants to address that? Not, you have a motion? Please cast your votes. The motion is not to approve the item. Do we have all the screens up at this point?
I'm confused by this voting. Staff recommends approval of the grant, so am I just hitting no? Is that what we're doing right now?
Your motion is not to approve it, so you would be hitting yes because of your motion.
Okay. It just reads different. I just want to make sure I'm not going to hit the wrong button.
No, you're correct. You made a motion not to approve it. That is the motion, not to approve it. So if you vote yes, you're not approving it.
Perfect.
Motion fails, with Councilmember Core, Adias, Gonzalez, and Smith voting no.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to... Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt 7I1.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
But I polled it, will I not get... Oh, 7I1, sorry, never mind. Yeah. Can we, can we get the motion read? What this is that we're voting about?
Wait. Councilmember Bashir Tash, we're, right now, there's another motion before we go on to the second item, and Councilmember Gonzalez...
No, I just wanted to make sure that we have it on the record, what we're voting on right now, what this money...
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Can we please have that read, 7I1?
If City Clerk could read that, please.
Motion is to approve the grant agreement by Councilmember Gonzalez.
Again, I think with Councilmember Bashir Tash's, it's a staff recommendation approving the Economic Opportunity Area Grant Agreement, $60,000 with the Foxtail Lounge for business enhancements, including the purchase of equipment, materials, and furnishings, Ward 2.
And so now, Councilmember Gonzalez made the motion to support that. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmembers Weir, Coman, and Bashir Tash voting no.
Thank you. And now, next item is 7I2. Councilmember Bashir Tash.
Yeah, I just had a quick question for, who is the gentleman that's at the facility running it every day? If you could come up? I just have a few quick questions for you, and I appreciate all of you coming out and hearing from you.
Yes, sir.
So we, and it may be for the chair of the board as well, actually, by some of this might, you'd have to maybe answer. Are there any plans to open up anything else that would bring in some revenue to help with future endeavors and what you're doing in the community?
Right. So I've been the operations manager for about three years now, close to three years. And in that, we've developed some corporate partnerships as well that have helped with some of the funding. We do have regular fund raises as well. We've added two just in the past 12 months or so as well, so bringing in additional revenue.
Wonderful. Thank you. And in your expert opinion, being there every day, would you say that the homeless issue that we deal with as a city has gotten better, the same, or it's gotten worse?
You know, we're seeing a lot more new faces over the last, you know, period of time, definitely the last two weeks, but even going back on that, too. So we're seeing more faces, you know, whether that's, for whatever reason, you know, we talk, we engage in our guests daily on a regular basis, and some of them, they've lost housing, they've lost their jobs, they've gotten sick, they've lost their disability benefits. That's a lot of different reasons for that.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you. And do you wish to make a motion?
I would make a motion adopting staff's recommendation to approve this.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next item is public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side, so it's important that you identify yourself and make your statement succinctly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff's recommendation first, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone and identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash, indicating your time is up. Quickly enter your statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, and she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Public Hearing Item 9A, public hearing to consider economic subsidy agreement with BIOS Health not to exceed $250,000 to provide an economic subsidy for the implementation of a precision medicine initiative in Bakersfield. A staff memorandum has been provided for this item, transmitting correspondence in favor.
Thank you. Madam City Manager, madam, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will ask our Economic Community Development Director, Jenny Byers, to provide some summary information for this item.
Thank you, City Manager and City Council. In 2021, the city council adopted an economic development strategic plan for the city. It includes 17 different actions. One of those included attracting new businesses. They also provided resources in order to do the work of the economic development strategic plan. In January of '24, city council did enter into an agreement with BIOS to facilitate the expansion of their business operations from the United Kingdom and Canada to Bakersfield. And so they will, they have three locations, one in the United Kingdom, one in Canada, and then one in Bakersfield. BIOS is a specialist in the field of neuroscience. Luckily, the CEO is here to describe their product a little bit better than what I can. That original economic subsidy of $250 enabled them to expand those operations, advance their partnerships, secure additional investments, and develop a proposal for a projected precision medicine initiative in Kern County. At this time, BIOS has proposed to collaborate with Cal State University Bakersfield, so they've spent the last two years really working through their partners, including Cal State Bakersfield and Dignity Health, to support this development of the precision medicine initiative and to contribute to a broader workforce development effort here in the region. There is a government code section 53083, which is why this is a public hearing that was noticed for an economic development subsidy that was in written form, available to the public through the city's website. It was posted on May 16, 2025. There are members of the community that would like to speak on this project, and that is staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byers. At this time, public hearing item 9A is open. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Please come forward, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Hi, everyone, city council members and members of the city. My name's Emile Hughidge. I'm the CEO and founder of the business that is BIOS. Just to give you sort of a high level, my job, my day job for the past 10 years has been to develop AI technologies that let us create new medicines for the brain. That's been my day job. It's one of the most fulfilling occupations I could have imagined and wished for. And, you know, when we made our, when we made our partnership with the city just over a year ago, this was part of a bigger commitment we've made to partner with Bakersfield, to bring jobs, high-skill jobs, and new revenue to this city so that in partnership with you, we could distribute and accelerate the impact of our medicines. So I'll just speak briefly to why we're doing this, and hopefully we'll get some support from our partners at Cal State and Cornerstone Engineering to speak to their role in working with us. And obviously invite some questions when it comes to the Q and A portion, of course. So just to explain the purpose of why we're doing this, I want to explain for a minute just where I'm from. So I grew up in Aberdeen in Scotland. It is an oil and gas town, an agriculture town, and my mom actually worked in the medical school. So her career took her from Sri Lanka, where she was in a socialist education system, so raised by a very poor family, and her skill set and her education gave her a job that put me and my brother through school. Even as a single parent, a high-skill job got us into basically the developed world, the developed economy. Every person pretty much that I went to high school with went into oil and gas in Aberdeen. And I have watched over the past eight years, 50% of those jobs disappear from our hometown. Now, I have had the privilege of following a career in medicine and in data, and that has given me one of the most fulfilling professions I could wish for. And so to explain my purpose in partnering with Bakersfield, I see a cultural connection between where we've built our technologies in the UK and who I've built that with, and the business community and the culture of this city, which I recognize is an ag city, it's a healthcare city actually as well, it's also an energy city, and it has an amazing aerospace, high-tech legacy, too. So, you know, with this empathy, I want to say first of all, I respect the focus the city has on both looking after its current citizens and investing to attract more opportunity for those who are here and to build businesses here. That's why I lobbied two years ago to allow my business to build our American commercial office here. And to be clear, we supply some of the largest pharmaceutical and medical device companies in the world. We're in the business of imagining a future where, in the same way that a DNA scanner allows us in the long term to build better cancer medicines, we build a brain scanner that allows us in the long term to build better brain medicine. Up and down California, there were great businesses built on DNA. We needed to find a home to start the journey to build great brain medicines, and we chose this city. Now, our business is known as the slumberjay of our field. We're the best with data. It takes about $1 billion to bring a medicine out into the world. This has many bad side effects. It means that medicines cost way too much. It means we underdevelop them, we undermeasure the side effects. And using data, you can create precision in medicine. If it costs less to develop, you can sell it for less, you can target it more specifically. But to start that work, you need to invest in a supply chain where data is used in the test... testing, in the trialing, in the distribution of medication. Now, our business is 10 years old. So I had the privilege of starting this as a researcher in Cambridge with a few friends in a garage. Over the past 10 years, we've become trusted by the NIH, by Mayo Clinic, Stanford, Cambridge. We work with the best academic groups in the world. But the current challenge is to commercialize this. We need to distribute this at a commercial scale. And the problem to solve today is that there is a $26 billion backlog of clinical trials for brain medicines. So while the 20 best universities in the world, of which we work with all of them, can serve 100 people a year, you need to have places in the world where we can accelerate that development and put the skills in place to systematically and commercially develop these new medicines. So our vision for Bakersfield was to work to build capability here where we could bring at least one groundbreaking clinical trial to this town with our supply chain by 2027. That's a long journey, but a single clinical trial can bring over $100 million of economic impact by one trial alone. To be specific, we're pioneering new medications in epilepsy, new breakthroughs in cardiovascular medicine, respiratory issues, and autoimmune conditions, which are all, you know, huge indications in this region. So our job is to commit for many years to make sure that we can win one trial. We get that right, that skill set will be sold around the world. In the same way that my buddies who worked for Schlumberger had careers made for many decades around the world, we're trying to restart that engine on medicine. So that's the big picture. And we are really grateful that the city partnered with us over a year ago to start doing the work to find a local partner. So I'm just going to quickly give a report on what we've done so far, because I feel that responsibility to say how much we've committed to so far and what we've also benefited from in the city. And I will end with where next and hopefully invite Kristen to speak to that. So what we've done so far is we've partnered, we've also set up an office, and we've hired some staff. And our next step is a Precision Medicine Initiative. So in our early commitment alongside your contract, we've committed $1.5 million of in-kind equipment. We have the only scanning system on the West Coast here in Bakersfield in an office of Cornerstone Engineering and in staff time. We've had, we've also benefited from local businesses helping accelerate your contract, too. So thanks to the hospitality of the Hallies, I think I've been here 20 times. And I have had a thankfully light hotel bill, but I've spent that in Smitten and in many restaurants, making as many meetings as possible. We've been able to collaborate and build partnerships with Dignity Health. We've actually got an additional letter provided by Ken Keller, which didn't make the initial memo, and that's allowed us to also argue for a global remit for what we proved here in Bakersfield, even through the Dignity Health system. And with Cal State, with CBCC and Cornerstone Engineering, we've found some great partners. Now, I just will leave you with this sort of mental model, which is that we had to evaluate many global locations to pick our site. I had to argue with our investors and our commercial partners that we'd find a place we can trust. This was easy for me in Bakersfield. In the Mojave Desert, you have a perfect example of a first-in-class, best-in-class place to develop really complicated stuff. And we can do the same for specific brain medications, and that's my mission with you guys. And the impact will be skilled jobs and revenue if we get it right once. We might have to try 10 times, but I'm committed, and our business is committed, to keep going. The near-term focus is a Precision Medicine Initiative, because we have to build capability. One of the most important capabilities are for staff like nurses to be trained to support the scale of these trials, and that's why Cal State is an obvious partner. And in parallel, we're working with the business community to build a commercialization group that can bring the revenue alongside those skills. Thank you for your time, and I'll give Kristen some time. Thank you.
Good evening. The clock's ticking. Thank you so much, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Kristen Watson, serving as Chief of Staff to President Vernon Harper, as well as CSUB CFO. We hit a jackpot with Emile and BIOS. He understands the innovative spirit that Bakersfield has been built on. He, through BIOS and through this Precision Medicine Hub, we have the opportunity to turn healthcare, which has been an internal business entity here for Bakersfield, into a traded sector, which is foundational to economic prosperity and economic development. That's key. But we can't forget the other two important pieces that will happen as a result of this successful hub, the workforce development. We will be able to bring hundreds of quality jobs to the region and jobs that our students desperately want. We'll be able to train nurses, we'll be able to train data analysts, we'll be able to train just a plethora of folks. It will change the dynamic of the workforce here in Bakersfield. But probably the thing that resonates the most with me is our ability to change health outcomes for the people of Kern County and the Central Valley. And that is really, really important. So we appreciate your support. We appreciate the trust that you have given to us to be able to build this proof of concept and to really establish the infrastructure that we need to be successful. And just know that we are all working diligently. We have an MOU in process. We are looking at space over at the new Dignity Tower. There's some really important things happening, so look for more to come. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Welcome, Mr. Hally.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's an honor to have a few minutes here. I probably, my 42 years in Bakersfield, have not seen a more interesting man come to Bakersfield to build a business. I've had the pleasure of getting to know him extremely well. And I can't speak to the detail that Emile's, I won't try. But as a businessman who opened my office up to him because I saw the passion, I was part of the Kern Venture Group with Bob that made an initial investment. And we've all at that Kern Venture Group, I think, would bear to say, very excited. This technology had put it at the top of our list of anything we've invested in. I personally have invested in it because I believe in what he's doing. But more than that, I believe in the person. And I can tell you, I've spent hundreds of hours in conversations with Emile, his character, his commitment. And he really lives what he said about being committed to building something in a place like Bakersfield. And we've had massive discussions. But what I want to speak to that few of you will know, Emile is constantly, and when he's here, very driven with BIOS, but he's also, how can I help the area? And I personally have been able to work with him and benefit the whole region by, he's got, he has built such a following at Cambridge, in his time at Cambridge. He's got an accelerator program there that just feeds brilliant people into programs. We've been able to tap into that with our AI tools. I believe this man will single-handedly, if we help him and continue to bring him along, he's going to bring some really great talent, seed talent into Bakersfield that will grow into more businesses than just mine. It'll penetrate our region, and it'll raise the bar in precision medicine and AI. This man's kind of an AI genius. And I can tell you, as a businessman, my wife and I have invested heavily in it. And it is the future. Every business that doesn't apply this wisely is going to fall behind. Bakersfield needs these kind of people in our community, above and beyond his BIOS. And I really appreciate it, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Hally. Would you just say your name for the record, please?
I studied Kent Hally, Cornerstone Engineering. I apologize.
Thank you. And is there anybody else who would like to speak in the remaining two and a half minutes? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Basir Tash.
Yeah, I had a question for you, sir. Where is the office? You said you have an office and a few staff right now. Where is it located at currently?
Yes, sir. Current office is part of the Cornerstone Engineering site at the moment. So that's where we've kept our kind of pilot team, and we've brought our remote staff in.
So you said remote staff. So do you have any local staff that you hired?
Yes. So our first local hire is Javier Sogard, who's here today.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, I've been there before. Yeah, I know where it's at. And that's your first employee here? Awesome. Okay. From Bakersfield? Wonderful. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
That's a good question, though. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you so much. Thank you for seeing something in our community in Bakersfield and for investing in Bakersfield and seeing what we see. I think all of us up here see a bright, prosperous future for our region. And that's what we're working collectively on, relentlessly on. And it's just encouraging to see your commitment and your leadership investment here in Bakersfield. And so it's an honor to have you here this evening. And I'd like to make the motion to approve this agreement.
Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. This question is for staff, because I was a little confused when I read the, when I read the documents provided by staff. Have we already provided them with $250,000 in funding?
Yes, there was an agreement in 2024.
And are we providing them another $250,000 that we're doing today?
That is the request tonight, yes.
What was the reason for the original $250,000?
It was to locate some of their business activities here in Bakersfield. It was to start to form those partnerships. It was, at the time, just a little bit under discussion for their Precision Medicine Initiative. And since then, they have been able to really garner the support of CSUB, Dignity Health. And so that's how come you have these letters of support from Ken Keller. That's why Dr. Watson spoke today, is those are the relationships that they built with that initial $250,000. And then at this time, they're looking just to build out more of that program.
And if I may, Councilmember, we set a set of clear deliverables for what it would take to, you know, really begin the process of making Bakersfield the West Coast hub for BIOS moving forward. At this point in time, the big win is a clinical trial. And in order for us to get ready for a clinical trial, we're not quite there yet. But if we give another year to continue to build out those partnerships and the Precision Medicine Initiative, it puts us in a very competitive position to get that clinical trial. And so while it is an additional incentive, the scale, and I would suggest that we ask Mr. Hughidge as well to speak to the scope of those clinical trials, because he knows more about it than I do. But at that point, you're talking about $100 million of investment, you know, into our community through multi-year clinical trial. And so we feel that, you know, it's a worthwhile investment to give this one additional year to get us competitive for that push to get that trial.
I can help speak to the specifics if that's helpful. So first of all, thank you for your thanks, Councilman Gonzalez. And I reciprocate. And I will tell you that we kind of pursue into this discussion, what I had to do is, you know, after the first year of our relationship, by agreeing this contract with the city, I was able to turn around and invest $1.5 million from my balance sheet by showing this partnership. So it's already helped me that we've built this partnership. And I can, I'll run through a few specifics of what we've had to do to get to here, and then hopefully can then speak to the specific focus for what we now need to do this year. So last year, actually 2024, so, you know, it was actually sort of discussed at the end of '23, to find a commercial location for our business, we needed to establish an office, but we also needed to find healthcare businesses, other commercial suppliers, and then the local academic group that would have the skills and the capability to work with us, to sell to our clients, and then to do one-to-one work with each of them to find the people in their business that would be able to support this and that would be interested in supporting this, and then to come up with a resourcing plan and actually to spend some of our resources to train them and present with us to potential future revenue, to sort of build the case to find that outward investment. So in simplified terms, last year, your contract with us allowed me to also match from my balance sheet about $1.5 million, of which some of that was equipment that we cited here, and some of that was, as well as our local staff, we flew in some world experts in trialing. We sat with the management teams at both the Dignity Hospitals. We then worked directly with them to find individual providers around the city who could refer patients into this initiative, got their support, found a specific set of medical studies that would be feasible in this region, and then worked to speak to one of the top three medical device firms in the world, which I can't disclose the name of, and then a similar top five pharma company in the world to get their buy-in, that if we turned on that capability here, we would have a client waiting. So that was the sort of specific level of work we needed to do. And in parallel to that, we worked and engaged with the Cal State team, worked actually very early on with Vernon Harper as he came into his sort of full tenure as president, and he made, he sort of bought into him building Cal State into Kern County's university. Part of that strategy was to find a new leg that was new, as well as the sort of energy innovation, what was the new thing. So we gave him and his team support to show what they could do and where they could partner with external academics. So it was real-time and labor, and we brought a lot of, the reason for bringing outsiders in here was to show them the value of the city. And to your point, Councilman Gonzalez, I spent a lot of time in Europe and the Middle East explaining why Bakersfield was the coolest place in town, right? And it was actually kind of fun, because I'd say, have you seen the Top Gun movie? What was the coolest plane? And where do you think it was tested? And so it was also for us to take the risk on why to be here. Now, there's a real capacity need we need to double down on. We need to activate this university, which is clearly not a, you know, a Stanford, but to have a competitive offering. And so we are working hand-in-hand with Cal State to let them raise the capital and demonstrate their capability to be in something else that is compatible, different, and valuable, right? So academic centers like Cambridge, where I work, and where my mom, Aberdeen, where my mom is an academic, they train your surgeon. But if you trial a medicine, you need tens more staff. And places like Cal State that train workforce members like nurses need resource, too. So a lot of our focus for this year is really on then activating the ability for Cal State to show that globally, if you want the Mojave Desert experience, but in medicine, Cal State is at the table with us. And we need to, you know, until they can achieve revenue, we have to co-invest with a contract with yourselves to help them get there. And then secondly, we're working with the local business community so they can have a local business that can generate revenue with us. So it's a focus that's come out of that first work, not just the overtime on the old work, if that makes sense. But we're trying to get there. So I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Hughidge. Do you have any other questions, Councilmember Coleman?
No, I, yeah, I don't want to second-guess the council that approved that the first time around. So, and I'm domestically prohibited from voting against anything that has to do with medical technology. So, whatever. So, yeah, thank you for the work you're doing here. And I second Councilmember Gonzalez's motion. I know I don't have to, but I did anyway.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my Councilmember colleagues and those from the community who have spoke today. It is heartening to see biomedical sciences ventures come to Bakersfield, where most often, this is expected to be in the Bay Area. And that's what one kind of comes to expect. So for you to find a home in Bakersfield for this idea and this project, I feel is a precedent for others to follow suit. I feel for our community, it's important to also hear, I feel you've kind of spoken a lot of the language that we share, and the love we share for our hometown and for the city of Bakersfield. But in picking Bakersfield, you know, I think we'd love to hear the cities that didn't make the cut and what really was, what really brought you to a place like Bakersfield, California for this idea. And with that, you know, that'll be my only question, but I wanted to thank creative partnerships that bring education institutions, something creative that combines data and medicine, as well as our hospital and healthcare providers, and our local engineers, local businesses that are the minds that build our cities. So, thank you.
We have the opportunity for a traded sector here. And so there's been a lot of excitement since you started exploring this. Thank you so much, Cornerstone. Thank you for your investment. And CSUB, thank you very much. You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you, sir.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Arias absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please. If you would just read the next public hearing.
Public Hearing Item 9B. Public hearing to receive comments related to community development block grant Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act before grant closeout.
Thank you. City Manager, Clegg.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I'll have, again, Jenny Byers, our Economic and Community Development Director, and give a summary on this. It's a fairly procedural process that we have to go through, and she can just walk you through that.
Thank you, City Manager and City Council. Yes, it is pretty procedural. We received three different sources for the CARES Act, the CDBGCV, 1, 2, and 3. It was about a little over $9 million. The first round of funding, we really used for our small businesses. There were four programs in that first round. Three of them were for small business, either assistance, grants, technical assistance, and then also there were some resources made available to our senior center during that time. The second round of funding was actually distributed through HCD, through our state resource, and that funding was 4.4 million. It went for the creation of 79 units of milestone housing. And then the third round, we received some funding, put more resources in for those small business assistance, but then also did a partnership with Community Action Partnership of Kern County, their food bank expansion, and so the CV funds contributed to that, as well as some cooling units at the mission. At this time, in order to close out the grant, we do need to have a public hearing, accept community input, and then staff will submit to HCD. We have invoiced all of these resources and have been reimbursed for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byer. Mr. Clegg, do you have anything further?
Thank you. No, Mayor.
Thank you. So at this time, Public Hearing Item 9B is open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and
Motion to receive and file public comments.
You have a motion? Please cash your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Arias absent.
Thank you. And now would you read the third public hearing item, please?
Public Hearing Item 9C. Public hearing to consider general plan amendment zone change number 24-0372. LAV Pinnacle Consulting and Engineering representing the Fred Jimmy Nien 2008 Living Trust is proposing a general plan amendment and zone change on approximately 2.63 acres generally located at the northwest corner of Taft Highway and Michelle Street. Lozo Drury LLP, on behalf of Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, submitted an appeal to the Planning Commission's approval of the request.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll call upon our Development Services Director, Phil Burns, to provide a summary.
Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. What we have tonight is an appeal for general plan amendment zone change 24-0372. What this is, a 2.63 acre site located in northwest corner of Taft Highway and Michelle Street. The purpose for the request is to have the general plan use designation and zoning to be consistent with the parcel itself and adjacent parcels. The existing parcel includes multiple land uses and zoning designations, which the commercial designations cover the majority of the site. The general plan amendment zone change proposed eliminate the split zones and result in a 2.63 acre C2 zone commercial site. All future developments will be analyzed according to municipal and SEQA compliance, which other things will require site plan review in addition to sewer and drainage studies of the site. The general plan amendment is only for 0.39 acres of the site, as existing suburban residential land use, along the northern portion, and changing that to GC, a general commercial land use. The zone change more specifically is to change 1.19 acres of the site from existing AAG zone along the western portion of the site to a C2 regional commercial zone. Also to consider the mitigated negative deck, to adopt a resolution pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act. And to give a little background, the City Planning Commission considered this item and approved it, the item, on March 20, 2025, and meeting the recommended approval for City Council. There was testimony in opposition by representative supporters for allowance of environmental responsibility, SAFER. And there was also testimony in support of the project by Doug Gosling, legal counsel for the applicant who is in the audience tonight. We received the appeal by Lozo Drury, and it's also on behalf of Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, SAFER. And you also have a blue memo, which is a comment letter, 315 pages, and our blue memo prepared to respond to those comments. Staff's recommendation to council is to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commissioner's recommendation. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Anything further, Mr. Clegg?
If I may, just, in my role as an oversummarization, we have a site with a single owner that has a mix of zones, that wants to consolidate those so that it can facilitate reasonable future development. There will be future reviews of any projects. This does not approve a specific project. And we, as staff, again, feel like the zoning is consistent with the uses that make sense at that location, and it's good governance to be able to consolidate those.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. So at this time, Public Hearing Item 9C is open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Please come forward. If you'd introduce yourself, just go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Counsel. My name is Kyla Staley, and I'm with the law firm Lozo Drury. Here on behalf of Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, or SAFER. SAFER respectfully requests that the City Council refrain from approving the general plan amendment and zone change at this time, because this project doesn't qualify for a mitigated negative declaration or MND. Instead, SAFER respectfully requests that the City Council direct city staff to prepare an environmental impact report, or an EIR. Under SEQA, an EIR must be prepared rather than a mitigated negative declaration whenever it can be fairly argued on the basis of substantial evidence that a project may have a significant environmental impact. And while the city hasn't identified what exactly will be built on this site once the proposed land use changes are made, this project will result in reasonably foreseeable and indirect changes to the physical environment that must be addressed in an EIR. By changing the use of the site to commercial use only, the site is inviting uses that are associated with increased air pollution and impacts to wildlife. Here, there is substantial evidence that the project may have a significant impact on air quality and biological resources. The MND concluded that the project would not result in any cumulative air quality impacts, because there's not a specific building associated with the general plan amendment and zone change. But the project will facilitate development at the site that will result in significant air quality impacts. For example, the project proposes a change in land use that would allow a range of commercial uses to be built, such as department stores, warehouses, or shopping centers. The SAFER's air quality expert determined that with these types of potential uses, the project would likely result in a potentially significant increase in construction and toxic air contaminant emissions like diesel particulate matter. The MND for this project does not analyze, nor does it propose mitigations for these types of impacts. SAFER's air quality expert also found that these types of uses that the MND proposes would also increase the risk of valley fever in and around the site. The MND also did not analyze nor mitigate this impact. With respect to the project's impacts on wildlife, the MND concluded that the project will result in a less-than-significant impact with mitigation incorporated. However, SAFER's expert ecologist found that even with the mitigation, the project would still result in potentially significant impacts on special status species. Those impacts being habitat fragmentation, interference with wildlife, and vehicle wildlife strikes. SAFER's expert also found that the proposed mitigation measure is not sufficient to reduce the project's impacts to a less-than-significant level. The MND proposes pre-construction surveys for special status species, but SAFER's expert found that this type of mitigation would not adequately mitigate impacts to these species, because they require more robust and thorough protocol-level detection surveys. So because the project will result in these impacts, along with significant, potentially significant air quality impacts, and MND is not appropriate for this project, and thus SAFER respectfully requests again that the City Council grant the appeal and direct city staff to prepare an EIR for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Staley. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? Welcome, and please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Doug Gosling. I would like to use your elmo. Do you know how to use that, Madam Clerk?
Somebody will help you.
Thank you very much. What you're looking at is part of the staff report. This is down at Taft Highway, and Highway 99 is right to the right. There are multiple gas stations and good industrial complexes in this vicinity, as staff recommends and as staff has reviewed. Most of all this is commercial. And you'll see the hatched area is, we have a duplicative, disjunctive, multi-use zoning on our parcel. We're trying to clean that up right now on the books. Under SEQA, if an agency is going to undertake a project, if there's a significant impact because of that project, then you get into those lower areas. Staff has worked through the mitigated negative deck. There's no project. And you also know from staff's recommendation that if a site plan in the future occurs, it will come back to the county or the city. I apologize. And so we're working through a procedural item right this time. So we recommend, we support staff's recommendation, and we're working through that. I wish I had a story as BIOS had, as far as wonderful stuff, but we're working procedurally at this time. I don't have any other comments at this time. Any questions?
We'll take those later, Mr. Gosling. Thank you. And now, is there anyone who would like to provide rebuttal statements in opposition to staff's recommendation? Go ahead, Ms. Staley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that under SEQA, a project is something that will result in, could result in indirect or foreseeable physical changes on the environment, and that's what this general plan amendment and zone change does. So with respect to the definition of like what a project is, it doesn't necessarily have to be something that is physically built. But here, we know that the zone change here is, the purpose of it is to facilitate future commercial development, which will have an indirect foreseeable change on the physical environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Staley. Is there anyone else who would like to provide rebuttal statements? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to provide rebuttal statements in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Bashir Tash.
I would like to make a motion adopting staff's recommendation, denying the appeal and upholding the Planning Commission's recommendation, please.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I don't see any. So you have a motion? Please cash your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Arias absent.
Thank you. And next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Just waiting for any names to come up. Seeing none, I don't see any. This weekend, we had the honor of remembering our fallen, and we are so blessed to live in our community that really does remember our fallen, those who have given the ultimate sacrifices. There were numerous events, and I saw many people out there. And we just, tonight, just, again, thank the families, thank all of those who have served, and thank the families of the fallen. With that, I will close this meeting in honor of those who have served and paid the ultimate sacrifice. We stand adjourned at 6:40.